A little too much today.
I think that was, yeah, it was kind of one of those days, I was just telling Bob, these four day weeks as we try to cram five days into four, just really stink. Okay, so, you don't have the full team, but you got the 18.
There you go.
So, we'll leave it at that. And so, we'll start in order of the agenda, so we'll start with tax receiver. So, Chris, this is her maiden voice, this is the first time that she's been through this, but I will tell you that she and I had a chance to chat, I was very impressed with what she put together. So, Chris, if you, I'm not expecting you to talk really much about 2019.
Right.
What you may have accomplished, or as you came in.
Nothing.
I was just gonna say, as you came in.
Maybe somewhere else.
But if you would pick up and talk a little bit about the priorities and goals for 2020. Thank you.
Certainly. As, I'm gonna kind of verbatim list a couple of things right from the list here. Not too much meat here, I've only been here a month, so consequently, I'm still kind of learning and trying to figure out what goes on in our office over there. The snowbird list is still a priority, it's continuously being updated and we're working on that. Unfortunately, we did have a glitch this past season where incorrect information was given to the printing company of our bills. And consequently, all bills that were supposed to go to our snowbirds came back to our office. So, that glitch will be fixed, however, we are working with the snowbird list and maybe emailing them some of the bills, that seems to be a good option. Mail in Florida goes very slow, so consequently, we get a lot of phone calls from them also. Secondly, we've been receiving a lot of phone calls from residents requesting that we email them their bills. Not sure if this is something we may want to go towards in the future, at least partially, so we're gonna kind of test it out on some of our residents and see how they react and that kind of thing, because in the last couple of days, we've been sending a lot of emails to people. And I've been putting in there, if this is a favored way of receiving your tax bill, let us know, it would save us on stamps and envelopes, so looking to see if that might be an option for us.
So, it is safe to say, though, because the tax bill got mailed out, that they probably got a tax bill in the mail?
Yes.
And, but they want.
An email, too.
Electronic on top of that, so.
Yeah.
Kind of a, a little bit double duty for us, so yeah.
Yes, it is.
If we could get out of that double duty.
Exactly.
That would be ideal.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then, Part C, I think would be a great benefit to our residents, and that is going to an option where the actual taxpayer can pay their tax bill here in their office, or right on our website. Yes, they can go to the tax portal at the county, but the good thing for us would be, the rate's cheaper.
Quarter percent.
It's a quarter of a percent, and I even see through ValuePoint payment systems, the same website we use for dog licenses, they charge 2.45, and the county charges 3%. So, if I could have your blessing, perhaps in the future, next, obviously, not this season, but for the school tax season, perhaps we could offer that service to our residents. A lot of people ask about it, well, can I pay for it over the phone? Well, no, but you can come, we can't even say you can come into our office to do it, so maybe we could offer that to them.
So, they can mail it in.
Yes.
They can come in person, they can bring you cash or check, they can drop it in the drop box, and they can go to M&amp;T Bank.
Yes.
And when they go to M&amp;T Bank, I'm guessing it's cash or check only?
Yes.
No credit card?
No, correct.
All right.
So, then the other option would be coming into our office and paying with a card, or going to our website. And they also can go to the county website and pay there, but if we're gonna be charging less.
Yep. Money better in my pocket than theirs.
Right. So, then, the next section, again, I couldn't really speak too much to this, resources needed to maintain the current level of service for 2020. Seems like things are really good in our office. Lisa Gaspar is an extreme asset to the town, and she's been an extreme asset to myself and working with her, she's, I came into a Rondiquin and kind of had to dive in, almost drown, but I got a good feeling for what school taxes are all about. So, she's given me a lot of pointers and guidance in the whole process, so we're working very well together. So, as far as additional resources, I didn't see any that we needed at this point.
Okay.
Ongoing specialized training, I'm being trained every day, so.
That's good.
Fourthly, major projects, again, it's too early for me to really speak to that in any great length.
I think, at least exploring the credit card component, I think that's, you know, definitely worth the look.
Yeah.
And see if that makes some sense, I, you know, I'll only speak as a father of two daughters who, the only cash they seem to have is if they lift it off me. Everything else is credit card.
So, there you go, yes.
So.
Might be the way to go.
That may be the way to go.
You got any cash?
No.
And then, finally, accomplishments for 2019, taking, speaking to the girls in our office, the security cameras were installed, I understand, not too long ago. Automatic door closure were installed about a week or two ago, so thank you so much for that. And the question and answer page was added to our website, which is, I think, a very good resource for our residents.
Great. Okay. Board, questions for Chris?
Welcome.
Questions, concerns?
Thank you.
I like that idea, exploring the credit card.
Yeah.
That's good, great for our residents.
And the good part about it is that we already have the software in place, it's not like we have to buy anything, it's just adding, we already have an account for our dog licenses, which is the clerk account, then we already have an account for DEC, because that's a separate account. All we have to do is add a third one for the receiver, and we'll be all set.
All right, and then, from a monthly report standpoint, that you put your monthly report together, adding that, that doesn't create.
No, because it will come up online, separate.
Separate.
And we'll have a description, so it won't be a problem.
So, you'll have that for the tax component, and still have yours for dog licenses and other.
We can work directly with BAS, and I have a contact that will, who has been talking about it for a while, so.
Oh, good.
So, I'll set you up with him.
Yeah, I look forward to that.
And it should be a pretty easy.
I would think so.
Change.
Okay.
Shouldn't be too difficult.
All right.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, you're welcome to leave, that's your call.
Stay for a little bit.
All right, very good, and we'll start with our town clerk.
Okay, so, I won't go over all my accomplishments, but in, from last year, but in keeping with the credit cards, we already have been accepting for quite a while Visa, MasterCard, and Discover, and I just added American Express this past year, so that successfully worked, and we do it for all transactions, so that worked out very well, too. And people seem to be adding their American Express credit card more often than having Visa or MasterCard, it's kind of a change, I don't know why, but at any rate, so.
So, it's the one that provides the highest points, cyclical, as they go through, whoever has the highest points for airfare and stuff like that is what you tend to use.
And people were very happy with that.
And insurance, too, they offer a lot of perks.
Also, I had brought forth a discussion with the town board, and then we ultimately implemented the domestic relations law, Section 14A subdivision three. We elected to waive a portion of the marriage license and certificate fee. This was a recent, for active duty members of armed forces in the United States. The law went into effect for the state fee on licensing for active duty members August of this past year, August 20th. We coincidentally had August 26th, our first active duty member come in since the law was passed, was very happy that we could waive that, but we hadn't put in place yet with our town, the, being able to not charge for the local fee. And so, we put in a resolution on October 16th, and so now, anytime an active duty member of the armed forces comes in, we will waive the entire fee. One of my goals will be, and has not, was not listed on here, but one of the goals would have to do with transcripts. And we're looking into, or I'm looking into it right now, in which we would give the first transcript free, and then the subsequent transcripts, if they request it, then we would charge that fee, and that would be how we'd start out, and then see how it goes from there.
Just for military?
Yes.
Yep.
My big project that's been going on since last year, actually, discussions were had in 2018 regarding records management. Our vault in the basement is pretty full to capacity, although Sue Scheid has been working quite hard along with me, getting the, purging the records that are no longer needed following the MU1 schedule. And I have been going through an ongoing effort to review, monitor, organizing the vault, and have received, and looked for competitive pricing for our mobile, I want a mobile shelving unit, and have three estimates so far, all under state contract. It's ASR in Liverpool, Henderson Johnson in Syracuse, and then HS Industrial Equipment in Rochester. So, I will be going back to them coming August to make sure that we still get those same prices. They were aware that we're gonna wait for an abatement of the basement, of the vault's floor, and get that repaired. It would be kind of like a five-step process where we'd have to remove the boxes, abate the flooring, install the mobile shelving, replace the documents, and then later on, after that has been all done, I'm looking to go towards a color-coded system to make it easier for anyone who's gonna be going into the vault, the department heads and so on, or us, to find the records easier, quicker, change that program.
So, if I put my ADA hat on?
Yes.
And I think about somebody that might be colorblind?
So, there is a coding procedure that I did look at in Canadega that actually is good for colorblindness, so that would be part of my discovery.
Okay, all right. Just, you know, if not for bad luck, you'd have no luck at all, right? Sometimes, as they say, and somebody looking for something and happen to be colorblind, and so, okay.
The only other thing I want to say about the record management project is that we have some pretty good shelving down there now. Not appropriate for our staff's backs, and, because it's not mobile, there's boxes behind boxes, however, I would want to keep some of those to store records that we never look at, that are just permanent records that need to be there, but that we don't actually look at. So, it's gonna be kind of a combination, and therefore, we won't need to get as large of a system as I was expecting for the mobile shelving unit.
Thank you, State of New York. They require us to keep all the crap that nobody ever looks at. Okay, that's technical.
It's an issue for, it's an issue for us records management officers.
I understand, I understand.
Another goal and priority, obviously, the town elections, lots of changes have happened in the past year, it continues to be ongoing. So, I've been working closely with the Board of Elections, securing the polling sites as I always do, I've already sent out the contracts, and in the contract this year has a question for all the polling sites, would they be willing to offer their facility for early voting days? They have all that scheduled, I've gotten six replies back so far out of the 16 polling sites that we have, and only two of the six at this moment in time feel there's a possibility that they could accommodate us. It's just a lot of days, so it's an issue with the amount of days and the, you know, early voting has six to nine days, in April, June, and October, November, so that's an issue. So, we're gonna, you know, and I'm just happy that no one has said anything about the 6:00 to 9:00 PM for all the primaries, is, you know, now that that's gonna be changed, and that is the first time this year that we'll be doing that. Also, the layouts of the voting rooms, I'm working with the Board of Elections, we go to the polling sites and we organize the room so it's a steady flow, so no one is, you know, bumping into each other, or seeing over somebody's shoulder when they're voting on the document, so we've been doing that as well. Passport night, it's successful last year, the three passport nights that I have every year, this year, they will be scheduled for April 9th, July 30th, and October 29th, and this is host along with the county. Twice a month, Janice Bremen comes over from Oakwood Cemetery, she brings in the deeds that I sign and record and send out to the plot owners, so that will continue. Selling permits have become a larger beast in that, trying to control people to properly approach the homes of our residents, not being forceful, not being cushy, I give them the applicants and actual, our actual ordinance, I will not give them a permit until we go over the ordinance. I educate the owners, or company owners, or managers of the different companies that come to us. We either do a face-to-face or conference call, and they understand the rules and regulations, and we've had a much lower percentage of people calling and complaining now, and the applicants are aware that we are not to be reckoned with, because we are very tight on who's gonna get the permits, how many permits can go out, and so that is something quite big.
How many do you average a year?
So, I, so Debbie, we have it on our website, I've put it on the website, so you can see how many.
How many?
Typically, though, so when somebody wants a permit, it's usually more than one person with the company. And so, I try to limit the amount of people from each company, and after the background check that we do through the sheriff's office, we, you know, I make sure that, you know, certain people are gonna get their permit and certain people aren't, but I'm not gonna allow 20 people at the same time going out door-to-door, it becomes overwhelming for our residents, so we have quite a big control on that. I think I will skip down, as everybody knows, I do in-home notary visits, after-hours wedding ceremonies, continuing with all this. My staff and I will go out to the car for a person who needs handicap, hanger, if they are unable to come in, if it, or if it's too difficult for them to come in, and there have been a few shut-ins where I will actually go to their homes and take care of it at their house. Personnel, the big thing will be facility staff helping remove files and old storage shelving, and, you know, helping replace it, mainly replacing the boxes. I think the company that we will eventually hire will be the ones that will take care of all the shelving, so I don't think we're gonna have to worry about our own facility staff, but, but they will be very, we're hoping to have them help us with the, you know, old storage and removing files and putting files back in. I continue to have computer technical assistance and software training through BAS, which is our town clerk's software updates, general code codification project, IPS training, and our newly document training, docuWare training. There's many other things, but I think I'll just stop there unless there's anything specific from what I've said so far, or something you've seen on my goals and priorities that you want me to touch base on.
Okay, Board, welcome to the line.
Welcome.
Great to see you. Questions for Amy? The items that you'd like, either a little more information on, or a little more explanation on?
I have just one question. So, on that passport night, Amy, is that, are they just suggestions, the three nights, did you choose that, or they actually asked?
So, no, so, so what happens is, I've, you know, gotten a rapport with the county clerk's office there, and at the beginning of the, well, actually, it's usually in December, we start discussing dates, and I will give them the dates that are appropriate for us in that we are able to use the auditorium, and then I usually give them about nine different dates, and then they will come back and say.
Okay.
And early voting is also weekends, too, occasionally?
Yes.
That's probably even a challenge to try to get some of the locations, given that it's maybe open.
It's a challenge everywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, for April, it's April 18th through the 26th, June, and that's the presidential primary, then we've got June 13th through 21st, which is the Congress and state ledge, and also our local, if we have, if that happens. That's the, that's the one date, the June primary, that they're not 100% sure that we'll be having an actual primary. And then, the general election, November 3rd, October 24th through November 1st is when that early voting will be, so yes, it does go through the weekends.
I ought to tell you, I early voted in here, in this building, and the way it was organized was so smooth, I was in and out of here in like five minutes, so everybody.
Oh, you weren't.
Yes, I was.
That's BS, you were not, because I saw you when you were here.
I was talking.
You were talking.
But I voted in like five minutes, and I was in and out. It was very, it was very, the way.
Well, thank you, thank you.
You did a good, nice job with that.
We were just trying to get a flow for all the polling sites.
You've done all places for five minutes. All right. Chris, Amy, thank you very much, appreciate it, we'll let you folks go off to your next assignment duties.
Enjoy your rest of the evening.
Good to meet you all.
And we will bring in the hammer.
Thanks.
We'll bring in the hammer, and the seat is warm.
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you, guys, thank you. Have a great evening. Heidi, have you met Bob?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, a little bit.
I just wanna, I just wanna make sure.
I haven't met that, like, met officially.
I think I saw you upstairs one day.
I should've known that you first responders know each other, so I should've, I should've known that, so.
I knew that was a trick question.
Yeah, okay, all right, well, I'm just checking, I just figured everybody knew Debbie. So, all right, so, building, zoning, fire marshal, code enforcement, and all around.
I think you covered it all.
You got it.
So, I'm gonna start with the 2019 accomplishments, and I think it pretty much goes in line with the package that I was putting out.
Yep.
So, a couple stats for the year 2019, there was 150 new concerns, but then there was 423 concerns that were resolved, so that kind of goes back into years before, that's how I can, that's why that number's so much higher than the open concerns that came in and.
And Heidi, a concern complaint means what?
Sorry, so politically, I like it as a concern, but in the computer, it's a complaint. It's tomato, tomato, I guess.
Yes, I agree.
Concern sounds a little bit nicer than complaint.
So, is it typically a resident that's calling saying, hey, somebody on our street just put up a fence, or something like that, in the front yard? Is that allowed, is it not, or I noticed that there's cars in the driveway that are on blocks, and there's multiple cars on blocks, and they've been there for three months?
Yep.
Is that allowed, is that the type of?
Yep, that's the complaint.
That's kind of what I thought it was, yeah, okay.
And then, if you look further down, the property maintenance is actually the largest concern, so people are calling and saying, you know, my neighbor's not mowing their lawn as frequently as I would like them to mow their lawn, you know. There's still the three-inch, four-inch, that, you know, once it gets to that point, then it's, then we have to go out with them and address it, but until then, just because they might set it, cut it at a diagonal, it doesn't mean that, you know, I can address that. So, I usually call up the person that placed the complaint, and just let them know that, you know, that's not really a code violation. I'm sorry that you don't like that, we had somebody that didn't like that their neighbor's house was painted black.
Right.
I don't have color scheme codes to be able to follow that. Something I didn't put on there, I apologize, ProChamps. ProChamps is the organization the town put the resolution in, I think it was January last year, where the company does a little legwork for us for vacant and zombie houses, and they actually bring in revenue for us, so just over $23,000 is what ProChamps brought in for vacant and zombie houses.
So, there's two points there. One, there is nothing that we pay in, I mean, our involvement is our time, if they have questions, or if we need to provide some information. They go out and bird dog pre-foreclosures, foreclosures, and then we get a piece of that action, if you will, to the tune of 23.
23,967, I think.
Yes, $24,000, and so, that's a positive thing, and then, and then hopefully, what the other thing that happens is, is that we have less issues to deal with, that, and hopefully, things are resolved and don't end up on Heidi's plate with, you know, a lot of code violations and stuff like that, so seems to be working. Is it a perfect system? Probably not, but definitely has helped their team and take some of the load off their team overall, and we've got some revenue.
Yeah, and, you know, and I've seen last year, 2019, where some of the, you know, abandoned, foreclosed, or just absentee landlord properties actually start to get repaired. I can think of three of them right off the top of my head, that there's somebody living in there now, I don't know if they bought it, if they're renters, or whatever it is, and the properties are maintained. One of them, I think, the property looks great compared to what it used to look, and that's one on Jackson Road.
Yep.
Where whoever's living there owns it, has done a really good job with it in the last year. So, I think that, you know, the actions of this board back in 2019 with ProChamps, and certainly with your assistance, Heidi, has helped with, you know, moving forward with these properties and getting them back to conditions where they are not ISOs for the neighborhood. And you're right, Tony, you know, it's not a perfect system, but every little bit helps to get us to a point where neighbors, you know, don't feel that a certain property is an ISO. Are there still ones out there that need to be addressed absolutely, but, you know, little by little, we're chopping away at that, and I think that's something that the residents in the town appreciate.
And they're being held responsible for, you know, the lack of maintenance that they're not doing to their properties.
And Heidi and I, typically, one aspect of our one-on-ones comes down to some of those properties that have been, you know, real issues, real problems.
Right.
So, the one that comes to mind, 124 Beacon Hills, that'll actually be demoed starting on Monday.
Right.
So, by Tuesday, at the end of the day, or thereabouts, the lot will be cleaned, filled in, and then the spring will be seeded, and will be an ISO, and from an emergency response standpoint, I always worry about those properties becoming a property that gets torched.
Right.
So, yeah, a lot of, a lot of hard work. We've blazed, as I said to Heidi yesterday, we cut some new trails in Penfield this year with that particular property, because this is the first home we've ever torn out.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and that's all good, it's all good stuff to take care of those properties, and I think that, you know, through your efforts, Tony, and your efforts, Heidi, and the town board's support, that we are starting to chop away at these type of properties around the town, and I'm sure 2020 will be just as aggressive as 2019 was in addressing these situations.
Absolutely. Thanks, Andy.
So, you'll see on one of your pie charts, the 2019 top four concerns, property maintenance is at the top, and then construction without permit is the last one, or the lower one. On to building permits, we processed 1,121 building permits, again, on one of your pie graphs, you can see that accessory structures is the leader on that one.
Is that sheds?
Yep.
Well, I'm glad I'm a part of that.
Yes, thank you. That's right. That's right.
See, Debbie, I did things the right way.
So that must have been the plus 0.3% from last year. There was an increase on decks and porches by 0.25%, and then remodels, they were plus from last year at a 41%. The busiest months, a little small print over on the left side there, busiest months, the four of them are May, June, July, and September. We completed 3,106 construction inspections, which is about an average of 60 weekly inspections for the building inspection people. Purchased a new pickup truck last year, then we also have one in the budget for this year. So we're gradually stepping forward into newer vehicles that can withstand the wear and tear that we're doing, going to construction sites. Completed 213 annual safety inspections, this is where the fire marshal comes in, they're going out to the businesses and making sure that the businesses are, you know, the safety and the fire aspect, make sure that the egresses are not blocked, the simplex, the fire alarm systems are all working. We issued 922 CFCs and CFOs. We had three tablets. We took one of them off the budget for 2020 because we found that we could utilize that third tablet better in 2019, sooner the better. So instead of having two into the 2020 budget, we asked for one to be purchased on the 2019 with some money that IT department had left over, which works out really good because we've found that we've saved a lot of paper and obviously ink in the department, because the fire marshals especially, they can do their complete inspection on the tablet. Now, a couple of building inspectors are doing that as well. They don't have the paper copies, not going out with folders, not losing papers, it's all right on the tablet. They can actually upload pictures right there. So with the accessory structures, we're taking a picture of that shed, so if, God forbid, somebody moves it down the line, and we get a complaint that now it's on the property line, we can go back to our records and see that when we approved the final inspection, it was compliant. We went paperless with concern folders, so this, the complaint folders that we had, we had two drawers full. There was one that was an open file, there was one that was closed. We actually went paperless with those as well. Talked about the new pickup truck, consolidation of the permit applications. So Andy Savagis and Christine tackled this project where they consolidated some of the information for the application to make it consistent, and then we ended up putting it on the website as well. What we found is the documents that were posted on the website were inconsistent with what we were handing out at the desk. So it was a large project, trying to figure, okay, which document was right, and then how do you post it to the website? And we worked with Dave to get that done. Same thing with the informational guideline sheets. There's information, people will come into the desk and ask, okay, what's my guidelines for a deck span? You know, how lo, how long does my board have to be? How many footers do I have to have? And we had an information sheet that didn't match with the website. So Andy and Christine took that upon themselves and got that simplified for us. Simplified incident reporting documentation, I think at the back of your packet, you'll see the copy that Jeff David went ahead and created. So now it's uniform, it's consistent. Anytime that there's a incident, Jeff, Bill, and I will have the same information, and we can document the same information, instead of just kind of, I was going off past practice of who, what, when, where, how. The others may have gone through a different terminology, so now we all have it as one, so it's all consistent, and we're getting the same information into the document.
If you wouldn't mind, I don't think we have that document.
Sorry.
So, if you wouldn't mind, I'll have Anna scan and send it out to the board.
Perfect. Or you can pass through. I have extras. Well, that's the only one I have here.
You can print more.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
We answer a lot of FOIL requests from the town clerk's office. We've provided support to the town Penfield entities, specifically the emergency side of it. Jeff David is a volunteer with the Penfield Fire District, and Bill Lang is a volunteer officer with the West Webster Fire Department, so it helps that there's liaison. So if there's any questions that come up when they're at those functions, it's nice to have somebody right there to answer the questions, so there isn't rumors that start flying around that, okay, well, it's going to take me three days to get back to you or something like that. They get the answer right then. So that's worked out with the networking and getting answers, questions answered quickly. Christine still maintains her notary certification. I did get information from her recently. She, her numbers are dwindling down, and I know that the town has a lot of notaries. I know Jim Costello, Mark Valentine, I don't know who else over in planning and engineering, yep, Amy. So it might be something that we look forward to, you know, maybe for the budget for 2021, is maybe we don't need as many notaries. I know in the building department, Christine does some of them for legal notices when they go to court, but really, you know, for us to walk across the hall or for somebody to walk across the hall to Christine, it just might be something we might, might want to look at, because there is a charge to that, it's minimal.
It is minimal. I would just caution us not to be penny wise and pound foolish.
Right.
If she is getting to a point that she would prefer not to do it, and would like to give that up, that's fine, I would support that, and I would recognize that that is the case. But if it's purely done for, for dollars and cents, I think the last time I looked it was $60, it's a three-year period.
Yep. And she's just asserted.
Yeah, I don't think we need to be penny wise and pound foolish, so.
Okay. Yep, perfect. We completed our state required reports. So Department of State, they usually ask for how our construction is going, so I usually have to supply them with how many single-family houses were built, and how many additions and remodels and stuff like that. They just use it for their census report for the state. All the building inspectors, code enforcement officers, and fire marshals all have the required 24 hours in service training. We're all trained with the defensive driving, our OSHA, our OSHA classes for the fireside, also our mandated HR training, and our CPR AED. Staff represented the building department, so a couple hotspots for this one. Andy Savagis is the register of the memberships and conferences for FBOA, Finger Lakes Building Officials Association. And Jeff David is the president and Monroe County Fire Marshal. So again, it's nice to have in-house representatives on these, on these organizations. Staff completed additional training, such as the challenges of pesticides and poisons, emergency medical services. Bill Lang and I are EMTs, so I think we're the only, I know they're the only two EMTs within the, within the, this department. I don't know about DPW, if anybody's got.
I, I think you're the only two EMTs that we have that are, that are employed, as my knowledge.
Nice.
So, all right, I'm going to, I'm going to have you shift gears, and I'm going to have you go to 20 and 21.
Perfect.
And some of you guys, there are a bunch to go, so I want to stay somewhat on time.
Yep, because this will be quick. Comprehensive plan, I'm not going to read it word for word, it's pretty much, that's, that stayed the same. Same thing with providing support to the town boards, we're going to continue to do that. Same thing with continuing in-house low-cost training, that's something we have to supply the zoning board members with.
So, excuse me, guys, I'm going to ask in fairness to the folks that are presenting, if you'd like, please take it out in the hall, if not, please recognize the fact that we do have some business going on. Thank you. Go ahead, Heidi.
So zoning board members do have to get four hours of training each year, so we do coordinate them to make, coordinate that to make sure that they get that. Training is very, very important, in my mind, to make sure that the staff in my department has the correct training for building inspections, so we utilize the ICC International Code Council, FEMA, New York State Department of State, and Monroe County Fire Marshal's websites and any other PSTF, there's other places that we can take this training. I don't need to go over the expense. You can see that the vehicle's there, and we already talked about the replacement last year and this year. Receiving with the IPS, IPS and BAS remains the same, talk about the tablets. And the building inspectors, they're going to their annual conference in March to get their 24 hours, and I have limited down, so not everybody, not all of the code enforcement officers, including the fire marshals, will be attending it in March. Because what I was finding is that there's a fire marshal's conference in May that you can get that 24 hours of service. So I don't need to send all seven of us to both conferences and pay double for 48 hours when they really only require to get 24. That's not to say that if there's something that comes up that they want to attend, that they, you know, go for a four, six-hour block, that's fine, but I just didn't want to waste the resources in 48-hour classes.
All right, we appreciate that.
Emergency preparedness, they're offered periodically free of charge, usually at the PSTF. And then Christine and Catherine, Kathy, they would like to attend a couple customer service, maybe a front desk safety training opportunity. And then down at the bottom, the fire marshals review the disaster plan yearly. They reach out to the area fire chiefs for their feedback to make sure that that is conducive with the fire district's plan for, in case of a disaster as well. I think that's it.
Okay. So, board, questions for Heidi about any aspect of the business, building, code enforcement, Okay, all good?
Good.
All right. Heidi, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Heidi.
Thank you, Mr. Renner.
Okay, we'll move on to Mr. Renner, who's our last order of business before our work session, so David, floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. So I'm going to try to go through 2019 accomplishments and goals simultaneously here for a time. So the internet accessibility and community service side of things, first foremost is our website project that kicked off in 2018, latter of 18, and has been going through 19, and is going to continue into 20. Currently, we have four websites. We are at a status where the library and the town's sites have been coded and are ready to have data migration. Recreation and television are in a position of ready to be coded. So this project has been a multiple-month project, and it's going to continue to go well into 2020 with additional enhancements to them. Just to give you a quick background now on 2019, some key points. 255,197 page views, and that's for just the town site alone.
Dave, I'm sorry, what was that number?
255,197 page views. And unique visitors to the town site, round number 60,000. That's a unique users coming into the site. So with that kind of traffic flow, we've been working with the various departments and going through their content update and attempting to get that migrated. So we have our cutover tasks to come, we have our mobile app tasks for this, we have a resident service request module that will be implemented going forward, and we will be working with our third-party vendors, and those are our portals that we use for town site services. Those will have to be integrated. We will have employees staff area for boards, committees, and staff members to utilize for resources. And then we will also be working through a resident complaint module as an opportunity, depending if we wish to continue with what we currently use, or to switch over to something new and different. So that, that is on the table for discussion at a later date. Website exit plan, we do have a timeframe of in March that we have to make notification to our current vendor, hosting vendor of our exit. And then training will be ongoing for both staff and board members. Social media, with most electronic communications and services, this is always a moving target for us. We do have ongoing discussions with you, both in formal meetings, but also offline as far as some of our strategic planning, and we will continue that going forward. One of the areas that we are looking at to improve within social media is to utilize, utilizing management application to help us manage our outbound and inquiries that come through social media. Video delivery, so we do utilize cable television, but in addition to that, we also do over-the-top delivery, and that would be your devices such as Roku and Apple TV. In late 2019, we went ahead with initiating an app for Amazon Fire as well. That should be wrapped up by mid-year 2020. With the aspect of ADA, we are looking into closed captioning for meetings going forward and looking at the costs and the support equipment needed to make that happen for ensuring that all of our residents will have the opportunity to understand what is happening at our meetings. Capital project, ADA hearing assistance system, that will be utilized here in the auditorium, that's scheduled to be completed by the end of first quarter. Production graphic system replacement is part of our capital outlook that was on our radar screen. Unfortunately, during 2019, we had a pretty significant failure with it, we were able to do some patches, but the system runs Windows 97, which is no longer supported, so we made the choice of going ahead and utilizing funds at the end of 2019 to initiate that project for 2020 early. Cable franchise, this is one that is an ongoing project for us from the legal side, working with the town attorney supervisor and the Cohen Law Group to negotiate and work through our audit and franchising of our right aways with the cable company. But in addition to that, more recent time, we've also been working with the planning department and the attorneys on the 5G small cell rollout throughout the community in helping to plan for a stronger ordinance to handle that. Drone program, we do utilize a drone at times. The FAA continues to change its regulations, and they're in an inquiry period right now for new changes to come as far as the regulations for drones. We are monitoring that and following the procedures accordingly. Staff is studying to take the test to be qualified according to the FAA standards, but we're also trying to monitor to see what's changing and what that will do to us as a government entity operating a drone program. Partnerships, partnerships are important to us. We do collaborate with a number of other community groups as well as government entities, being that the county, school districts, and surrounding community townships, but most importantly, from our community partners. Last year, we worked with Penfield Little League, Little League International for their tournament that was held here for the state, as well as something new towards the latter half of the year of 2019, we began to televise the robotics championships and tournaments for Penfield High School and the county on the cable access, as well as on the internet services that we provide, taking those events live for them. Personnel, the only change that we foresee with personnel that you'll see in 2020 is the discontinued use of contract videographers for coverage of events and activities. It was determined that we would be better served from the aspect of going forward and having a seasonal employee, more or less a summer internship for individuals to come in and work with us. Expensing capital funding, we're going to work with the supervisor to establish a capital and infrastructure plan for the department. We've done a reasonable job with outlining aging equipment and trying to put together a plan for what should be replaced when, but this will formalize that, so going forward, we will have conversation with you, the board, on a regular basis as far as needs and more effective budget planning for this going forward. Additional areas that we're currently working in is the studio lighting grid replacement. We started that in 2019, and that'll be wrapped up in 2020. And then looking forward, I have a shortlist there of some of the things that are kind of high on the priority list. Specialized support for the department, we do work with a number of outside vendors and contractors for both engineering and IT services, website services, and then, of course, legal for TV franchise renewal. Training for the department, we continue to participate with the SBE Engineering Meetings, so this is Society of Broadcasting Engineering. There are local meetings that are held when there's topics of discussion that is within our wheelhouse, that's associated with the duties and responsibilities of the department, staff does attend. Those are free of charge. Wrapping up, who do we work with typically? As we've touched every department there is out there, if it's not from internet services, it's going to be from AV services. This year, we've got just a quick stat for you. This past year in 2019 was the first year we kind of really kept track of true live time, how much live time do we have for meetings? Last year, we did 232 hours and 46 minutes of live broadcast. Last year, we did 232 hours and 46 minutes of live broadcasting, and that's just a one-time event. I'll pass this out to you. We each take one, pass it on, but it'll just give you some insight to meeting lengths and what it takes to kind of get things done. This is the actual timeframe from when the switch is thrown to go live to the point that we, the meeting is concluded. Productions in 2019, we did a total of 132, 600 productions from out of house were received and aired. And that's kind of it in a nutshell for our electronic world of communications.
All right, board questions? Dave?
No.
Okay.
Can I just, what is one quick question?
Yeah.
Drone, do we own a drone?
We do.
Number, one, one? Is it used by anybody besides you? Built in two?
We use it with other departments.
Yep, okay.
It is, it's not, it's just specifically one and it's maintained through one department.
They are the, they are the managers of that. Yep, absolutely. Okay. Other questions? Comments? All right, David, thank you. That was awesome. We'll take about a four-minute break and then we'll pick up with our regularly scheduled work session, give you a chance to get down at the controls.